You could all, we are going to, this is the Tuesday, January 28th Committee of the Whole Meeting, and we are going to call all of the kids in the audience up front here to say the Pledge of Allegiance with us. This is the first annual Bring Your Daughter, or in my case, Son, to Council Day. So if you could all come up here and help us with the pledge. Stand basic, that means you.
Come on up front. Stand up on here. That's true.
Place the flag? Yep. Ready? You want to lead the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Where's Elizabeth at?
We know many kids have homework and tests and school tomorrow, so if you can't stay for the whole meeting, we understand, but we thank you for coming anyway. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Madam Chair, a quorum is present.
Fantastic. Do we have approval of the Tuesday, January 14th, 2020 Committee Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have an Office of Budget and Management Contract Report? I don't remember seeing one. No? Okay. Do we have any presentations this evening?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Let's move it along to ordinances tabled or remaining in committee.
2017, 103. 2018, 110. 2019, 008. 2019, 276. 2019, 430.
Any movement on any of these? If not, moving on to CWLP.
CWLP, 2020, 025. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 20-11-71, powered activated carbon with Carb Pure Technologies LLC in an amount not to exceed $166,800 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020, 026. An ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UW 20-11-72, liquid chlorine with JCI Jones Chemicals Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $111,300 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020, 027. An ordinance authorizing change order number one for a one-year contract extension and additional funding in an amount of $1,600,000 under contract number UE 17-01-80, generating facilities scaffolding contract with Apache Industrial United Incorporated for a total amount not to exceed $6,750,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020, 028. An ordinance approving a professional services agreement with the University of Illinois Office of Recreation and Parks Resources in an amount not to exceed $90,434 to perform a recreational demand study for the Springfield supplemental water supply project for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to debate agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you. Mayor, could we have a little more information about this?
Do you need, have any specific questions, or?
Yeah, so why are we performing this study? My understanding, this is for recreational uses on Hunter Lake. Is this something that's been requested by?
By the Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers.
Has required this, yes. To prove that there's a need for recreation on Lake Springfield, or Lake Hunter Lake.
So this is, for this, it's just, okay. And what's our response time for getting this study done and then back to the Corps of Engineers? What are the implications of this?
Pardon me?
What are the implications of this study? Is this something that we have to have for them to move along in their review process?
Yes, they're requiring us to do this to complete our environmental impact statement submitted to them, and that we hope to have it completed by, I believe it was August. Yep, February, August is the project time.
Okay. And do we know when the Corps then is supposed to give us any sort of feedback after this study?
That's a good question. I hope immediately.
Anyone else?
No, thank you. I'm sorry, thank you Ted.
So the motion is for debate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020, 045. A resolution supporting retirement of Dahlman units 31 and 32 no later than December 31st, 2020, for the retirement of Dahlman unit 33 no later than February 28th, 2022, for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for discussion.
Second.
I think we want to talk. Who's first? Alderman Donlin?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair DeSenzo. I appreciate the recognition and the opportunity to speak on this ordinance. You know, obviously, this ordinance is probably one of the most historic ordinances that we'll see in our lifetimes that relate to the electric side of the utility, and in particular, units 31, 32, and 33. And a lot of people out in the neighborhoods, and friends and family, and just regular citizens would, you know, ask me my position on this particular resolution. And my answer was, well, I haven't made up my mind yet. And they would look at me and with this perplexed look and say, what do you mean? And I'd say, well, I don't have any information. And so, over the weekend, you have these revelations when you're driving your car at times, and I had the echoings of the comments that my colleague Alderman McMiniman makes from time to time about our rules of procedure. And I went back and looked at our rules of procedure, and specifically, it says in our rules of procedure that, "Prior to consideration by the Committee of the Whole, the Office of Budget Management shall prepare and briefly explain a statement or note that shall include a reliable estimate of anticipated change in expenditures and revenues." I'm not going to read this entirely, but, and then the rest of it is, "Prior to consideration by the Committee of the Whole, each proposed ordinance or resolution basically shall have a fact sheet and a fiscal analysis of the proposed ordinance or resolution." And again, I believe that this is one of the most important resolutions that we will probably deal with pertaining to the electric side of the utility in our lifetimes. And people ask me basic questions. Alderman, what is it going to mean to the ratepayers financially? I say, I don't know the answer to that question. What is it going to cost to close down's unit 1, 2, and 3? I don't know the answers to those questions. Is it possible to convert 33 to a dry ash facility or natural gas? And I said, well, it probably is possible, but how much is it going to cost? And I could go on for a while. And I guess really, my point is, we got to have that information in front of us in order to know the impact, not only in this room, but to the ratepayers, which is probably most important, and before we make a decision. And I would like that information presented to us. And I know, Alderman Hanauer, you copied me on an email that you sent the utility a few weeks ago, or that basically asks for specific numbers, and I don't mean to pass the baton here, Chair, but I thought those were excellent questions. They were, there are questions that I heard a lot of people, Alderman Turner, Alderman Redpath, and others in the room, ask over the last few months. This has gone on essentially since prior to even our election in April of last year now. And I would just encourage the utility, we need to have numbers, and we need to have answers to questions, not the night of the meeting, but prior to making any educated, informed decision. Thank you, Chair.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Yeah, I did send an email. One of the biggest things that, there's a couple of things that we have not gotten that is vital. We need a rate study to know what would, what the plan is. Quite frankly, we're displacing 80, roughly 80 people. If the rates are going to stay the same, what's the difference of keeping them open? I mean, I don't know. These are things that we need to know. Where are we getting our power when we shut these down? We have not, I've said for months, we need to do an RFP for power, for either purchasing power, or, you know, are we getting it off the grid? What are we doing on this? We don't have those, we don't have anything there. I'm anxious to see the staffing plan from Scott Madden, because we've got, the 80 people, are what are we doing with management? What are we doing, you know, we, I know we've got some retirees coming up. Are we going to fill those management positions? We letting them go? We haven't been told any of that. You know, and then probably, we're still waiting on decommission numbers and true numbers. I'm talking about, we got to also have the numbers taking those things to the ground. Otherwise, all we're doing is we're pushing that cost down the future, and it's not going to get any cheaper. It'd be like Pillsbury, and we don't want it to be another Pillsbury. And then, you know, what's the real impact to the pilot? Now, we didn't run some of those units this year because of problems or whatever, and originally, we were told 300,000, and it was an $800,000 impact to the general revenue. Now, this year, we're doing pretty good on the budget, as we all saw. We're at 19% fund balance or something like that. But think of two years ago. Two years ago, what would have happened if we would have lost $800,000 in pilot to our budget? It would have been disastrous for this community and for our services that we provide our constituents. So, while I appreciate, and again, we all, Mayor, we know it's your decision, and I appreciate you wanting us to weigh in on it, but quite frankly, without data, I cannot vote to do anything with these units. I just, I'm not prepared to. Now, we get the data, that's a different story. Thank you.
Alderwoman Turner.
I agree with what Alderman Donlin and Alderman Hanauer have said. I am not, I guess I don't want anyone to take my comments as saying that I'm saying I'm against closing these units. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that if we are going to move forward, we have to do it in a very reasoned and responsible manner. I think that we can all agree that 31 and 32 are most likely going to go down. However, when you throw 33 in the mix, that sets up a very different dynamic. We, again, don't have any numbers or any information on what it's going to cost, what the impact is going to be. I know that we had a, we engaged a management company, Scott Madden, to come in, and when their principal was here, I asked some very specific questions, like, you know, what is your scope of work going to be? When are you going to finish? You know, what kind of report are we going to get? And I have not seen any of that. I've not seen a report or any, any, any direct information from his work. I also asked about a, a study with regard to a staffing study, and I've not seen that either. So I think that those are things that we, that we really need. And I know that everyone is real big on renewables and going to wind and, and, you know, and solar. And I'm not saying that I'm opposed to that, but we have to know where we're going before we just shut down, shut down the units. So if we don't, if we don't have an RFP out there that tells us how much, you know, power is going to cost from those renewables, so what happens if we just shut down 31, 32, 33? Something happens to the other one, and then you go to turn the, turn the light switch on, and there's no lights there. So I had this conversation with, with someone today, and he said, well, we can just buy power off the grid. So if we just shut down everything and then willy-nilly say we're going to buy power off the grid, that's probably, that would mean a substantial increase in our rates. And I don't think any of us are prepared to do that. I mean, I, so I just think that, we know that this is a direction that we are probably going to have to go with regard to part of the units, but we need to, I believe we need to move forward in a very reasoned, deliberate manner with all of the information in front of us.
Alderman McMiniman.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I agree with the comment just there made, that we have to move forward in a very deliberate and careful manner. I think that we have been moving forward in a careful and deliberate manner, and I think, Mr. Mayor, you did the right thing when we hired outside consultants to give us advice on the cost analysis. And I'm looking at my notes from a year ago, December 11, 2019. Scott Madden, our consultant, came to our city council, and they gave us very detailed slides regarding the expected cost savings from retiring units 31 and 32. Let me just briefly go over those notes. And Mayor, I agree with Alderman Donlin, we need updated fiscal analysis, and I think if we start with these slides, together with, each Alderman had the opportunity to meet with Scott Madden and our utility about a month ago. And I think at those meetings, we had detailed spreadsheets regarding cost analysis and the expect, expected number of employees that would be affected. But a year ago, the retirement of Dahlman 31 and 32, the slide said we'd avoid $40 million in costs in the next five years for a variety of reasons. We'd avoid 10 to 12 million dollars a year in market losses. The decommissioning would have 700,000 dollars, and 25 positions would be eliminated. That was specific in the slide. So there was a staffing estimate, but of those 25, 15 employees need transition. Then there was a slide regarding retire Dahlman 33. It stated, avoid $29 million in costs in the next five years, and then it gives the reasons how the costs are made, and then avoid 13 to 16 million dollars a year in losses versus market. What they're saying there is, if we, we can, when we need to buy off the market, we can buy off the market at a less expensive cost than if we generate the electricity ourselves. So I think we just need to update those slides, Mr. Mayor, if we need that for next week. I'd also like to say that I agree, this is an important step for the, for the city. I'm not sure it's as quiet as it's historic as, as we might think it is. I mean, when we built the new power plant, and that cost us $500 million in cost and $500 million in financing, that was new spending. This is cost savings. So from that point of view, I think this is a lot less controversial than, than building a new power plant. And let's recall that when we built that new power plant, we eliminated a power plant at that time, the old Lakeside Power Plant, without a lot of controversy. So I think, Mayor, you're moving in the right direction. I think we, we've got 60,000 ratepayers, and it's, it's true that we got to act to their benefit and save them monies when we can. Yes, this does impact our employees, and we have to be careful with our employees, offer them jobs to the extent we can. And I've been laid off in my lifetime, and it's rough. Fortunately, we've got unemployment insurance for those that get laid off, and we're going to look for replacement jobs. And it's not like, you know, we're closing a Pillsbury of 1,000 employees, or closing Fiedalas with, at one time, they had 2,000 or 3,000 employees that were laid off. Those folks sometimes came into a difficult economy. Right now, we've got a full employment economy, meaning that it's hard to find workers. Some employers are hard to find, are finding it hard to find employees. So, you know, the economic environment is much more favorable for a change of position for those that are impacted by this. So, you know, we've got a motion to discuss. I'm going to, I know there's more discussion that needs to take place here, but then I'd like to eventually get this back on the, the debate agenda for next week, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to go next, because there's some people in front of you?
Oh, we can wait.
All right. Alderman Redpath.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I do concur with Alderman Donlin and Hanauer's discussions also. Those are same criteria that I have, but some of the things we're not thinking about is the backup plan. And one of the things that we, we should have been doing for the last year is looking at alternatives on how to renew, maybe, maybe convert 33 over to a dry ash facility. Since that time, I've been in contact with a group of people in the industry that's going to bring me some of those numbers. I told that to the mayor this morning, that I'm going to bring some, maybe all terms. There may be something we can do, maybe something we can't do, but we're going to look at it. It is an impact on our employees, and they understand what's going on, and it's unfortunate that there's probably going to be some people that are going to lose their jobs. I know the mayor's working diligently to try to find places to put these people and maybe try to recover some of their positions. It's not going to be the positions they have, but it's going to be possibly a job. I know he's very passionate about that, and I support him on that. I really think that a lot of this discussion's going to have to take place tomorrow night when we have our, our meeting. And again, a meeting's following that. The right thing to do was when you hired Scott Madden, that was a good move. I think they're a very competent corporation that's going to be able to help us. But we, we have, we have not enough information to move forward with this thing. And I think that if we, we pass this resolution, or try to pass this resolution, it's going to be a mistake.
Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You know, I understand the comments made tonight. Actually, this is a historic moment. When we first took office in 2015, we talked about the changing dynamic of the energy market, the environmental regulations that we cannot avoid, and the added costs. Coal plants are, you know, I'm a firm believer in coal will be here always. It's the right balance. What's the right balance? When we came into office, one day of cash, or less than five days of cash, now we're at 90 days of cash. That didn't happen overnight. That was with good due diligence, that all of us should take credit for. With regards to numbers, Doug can come up here if he'd like, but we are going to have the information tomorrow that's been shared previously about the losses. Let's, let's be honest, I think, going to the reports that might be presented, we have to look after the residents of Springfield. That's what City Water, Light, and Power got in the business for. It's for our ratepayers, providing reliable, affordable, quality electricity and water for our residents. But through time, the city of Springfield's lost sight of that. And when we came into office, that was the focus. That's how we built the cash up. That's how we have the Environmental Rebate Fund of $20 million. That's because we did our due diligence in moving and not losing sight of that. Doug Brown's done a great job with regards to the electric side and moving that direction. We were rewarded by Moody's. You know, Moody's is a rating agency that rates all power companies throughout the country, and we were acknowledged by our efforts. So, you know, we have to be cautious about self-interest. I know individuals that, you know, it's a lot at stake. How many of you, by raise of hands in the audience, how many of you have experienced flashes of lights or temporary power outages at your homes? Anybody experience that over the year? I get complaints about that all the time. You know why that is? And I'm sure John Davis can speak to it. We have to build our infrastructure. We haven't been able to do so because we don't have the resources. Taking away inefficient, older units provides additional funds to build our infrastructure. Because if you don't have a solid foundation, you don't have to worry about flipping the switch, because it's not going to come. So that's why you have to build the infrastructure, and that's the focus where we need to get to. So what's that right balance? You know, with regards to solar, wind left a bad taste in everybody's mouth, but what's that right balance with coal as a driver? Because Dahlman IV was built to the 2030 standards. But that can be taken away by a swipe of a pen from the federal government, or by the state government, and then all our investments into units could be all forgotten. So, you know, that's with, you know, we have to do our due diligence, that's why we're taking our time. After we had public hearings, they say, why are you having another hearing? We had the Chamber Report, we had the Sierra Club Report, you had Burns &amp; McDonald. Well, we want to make sure that we assess everything together and leave it up to our professionals to provide the information, which they will do tomorrow. Alderman had provided additional questions that we're going through, kind of reorganizing the slides, giving the dollar amounts associated, a lot doing with the environmental regulations coming down the pipe. And so, you know, if there's additional questions that need to be answered, I encourage you to email them to Doug Brown and get them to him. I know Alderman Hanauer has, and Alderman Redpath, but if there's others that have questions, burning questions, we'll try to get them answered tomorrow night, and then move forward with the next council meeting. I don't know, Doug, you want to add anything, or John Davis? Oh, there he is.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that, you know, a lot of those questions, that some of them have been answered in the last presentation. Some of them need clarity, and I think there's some things that, you know, going forward, you know, what does that mean for, you know, again, a cost of service study, you know, in the future? And that's something that eventually needs to be done. There's things that drive decisions that are outside of our control, and that really comes from environmental compliance, and then decisions that we're going to have to invest millions and millions and millions of dollars. And, you know, committing to that is going to be one of the focuses, you know, that I'm going to really try to make sure everybody understands the timeframes and the issues with that, because that's really going to, you know, force the decisions of retiring the units, whether it comes with, you know, a resolution or, you know, through executive orders. But, you know, we're going to need some really serious direction really soon. So that's going to be the focus of the, of the meeting tomorrow, I think. And a little bit more focus on 33, as what the mayor has indicated.
One thing I will add, though, is brought up with the employees. You know, I used to be in banking and went through a merger process, and that's not easy. I mean, jobs were eliminated. Well, we're talking about our families, and we're, we understand that, and that's why we're starting to transition now. But the more we delay decisions, the more time length we have, we can move people into positions, hopefully sooner rather than later, because that's what we're trying to figure out right now. How can we do that process? And Scott Madden, that's on the agenda later on. That's, the next phase is how they would help us in that process. So it's, you know, it's an integrated approach, that it's all interrelated, so, you know, these are all before us right now.
For me, it's a little frustrating, and for once, not at you, Doug, but I've been sitting here for almost three years, and we've been talking about this for three years. So whether it's us sitting around the horseshoe, or people out in the public that contact us, or like, you know, what's going on? I've never heard anything about this. We've been talking about this for years. I do have a, I'm very concerned. I have a constituent that lives, and I've talked to you about this gentleman, he lives in Ward 6. He's lost half of his yard to the rail improvement project. He works on 33, he's concerned about losing his job. So, you know, we are affecting real people's real lives, and the sooner we have a definite path forward, the better, because leaving people in limbo in any fashion is not okay with me. I've been, like, five years ago yesterday, I lost my job. I'm a single mother, single income. People need to know what's going on, whether it's their rates, their jobs, whatever. We've got to make some decisions, some hard decisions. Alderman Conley, or Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. And Doug, just real quickly, I want to make sure, so for the presentation tomorrow, you are going to be coming with the financial numbers on the regulatory impacts of delaying a decision on unit 33?
Correct. If we were going to keep unit 33, we'll have laid out what those regulations are and the costs.
And the timelines for that?
Yes.
Because my understanding is that we have a fairly tight timeline.
Correct.
Before we trigger significant investments that we'll have to make, no matter what.
Yeah. I mean, the investments are immediate for the engineering phases that we would have to do.
Right. From my understanding, because we've talked about this, some of the engineering that would have to happen for unit 33 to stay open, we're actually a little bit behind the ball on that, aren't we?
Yes.
I mean, we can catch up, obviously, you have good people, but.
Right.
Okay. And, and just also, I would ask if we could, obviously, you're not the, well, you're not a billionaire, because you can't tell me what, what natural gas rates are going to be in the future, but if we could have some sort of, just a, an overview of kind of, and because we've talked about this, and I want to make sure that everybody about this, and I want to make sure that everyone has the information available. The difference in rates we would have been paying if we had been buying off the grid over the last maybe two to three years versus what our power is, is that something you can
I don't know if I could put that together by tomorrow night, though.
Okay, then maybe if we could have something like that
The comparison, I mean.
Later, like maybe in a week or so.
Sure.
Alderman Donlin, then Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. I just want to respond to some of the comments. I don't know if I disagree with anything anybody said. Mayor, you're right. I mean, when it comes down to it, at the end, we got to be able to make sure the lights come on. And that's infrastructure improvements. And, you know, from what I've been told by the utility is that we can't under, we can't close 1, 2, and 3 right now and just have 4 and be confident that we have the transmission upgrades or the transmission capabilities to keep the lights on all the time. So Doug, you've been pretty adamant about we're going to need, going to need to make some transmission upgrades to rely more on the grid than we do presently.
Correct.
I just, what I'm getting at is, I don't, we don't really have the flow of information as far as, maybe that's part of tomorrow's presentation.
It is.
That says, you know, how much that's going to cost and where that money's going to come from. And so I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah.
But, you know, when it really comes down, when it really comes down to it, and you said it, it's what's really driving this, there's two things. It's the excessive cost of these older units, doesn't make sense anymore, and the environmental regulations in particular.
And the environmental risks.
And I've heard you say it, and you've been subtle at times and more pointed at others, which I like, basically saying that there's certain deadlines that we can't do anything about. And if you could, just make sure that's a part of the presentation.
Yes.
We got to know, we can't send wet ash to those ponds
Right.
At this date forward. And we got to know, you know, we know that, okay, then we can work our way back.
We've made up a one sheet two for 33
Perfect.
That will show you the rigs and the costs and
It's just, we don't, right now, we're in committee here, and we just don't have that information. So I'm happy to hear that it's coming.
Yeah.
But anyway, so we'll get there tomorrow. We'll have an opportunity to hash it out.
And the transmission upgrades will be complete by June of 2021, before we retire 33.
But we're going to get all that in writing so we can see it and absorb it and still have
Absolutely.
Time. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
One thing, I kind of want to, when I first came on this council, one of the first questions I asked was, what's it cost for a megawatt of production, or a megawatt hour of production? And I was told for the last five years, well, it's pretty hard to figure out, pretty hard to figure out. Well, I want to know, and I think this council should know, and it should be updated quarterly if it has to, we need to know what it costs for Unit 4 to produce power, and it needs to be, I don't care how hard of a, how hard it is to figure it out, if we have to get, you know, a genius in here to figure it out, let's get it done. But how can we talk about selling power and doing anything like that when we don't know what it costs to produce? I think that's important. The other thing that concerns me about this is, we had two studies that came out a while back. Andy had one, and Andy Knott had one, and then Chamber had one. And when those studies came out, they were all, no, they're wrong, they're just, they're wrong. They tried to, you know, and now all of a sudden, the numbers you're telling us are exactly what those studies are saying. And, you know, we need to be told the truth here from everybody. We don't, studies like that, if they're true, tell us they're true.
Well, I think the Chamber one, when it came out, what I had said, from what I can remember, was that, in essence, the study itself isn't, it had a lot of flaws in it. But the premise was true, that they were an economic. And we'd already started the RFP process prior to that being released. And, you know, when you're looking at the Integrated Resource Plan, it's not just looking at the cost of the units and saying that they cost too much just to, you know, to say that we can just shut everything down and just buy off the market, because that's not true. Because we need to have vote support in the city. We got to have generation in the city. That's just a fact. You know, per the, you know, industry standard practices of designing transmission grids. Because, you know, we only have six ties with the generation that we have, you know, with those limits. That's why we're doing the upgrades, so we can retire 31, 32, and 33, still have Unit 4 in our combustion turbines, and be able to provide our citizens with reliable power. So, you know, looking at this, and I can't really recall what the issues were with the SNAPs reports way back then. But, you know, even with the, even going back as far as the Burns &amp; McDonald issue, some of the things that we were trying to do to write, you know, to kind of fix things was getting a lower coal price. So we did that. And then lo and behold, the gas market keeps declining, you know? So, I mean, there's certain things that are out of our control that we can't anticipate what that's going to be. Things that we can anticipate going forward and making these decisions is getting an RFP. Once we know the dates for certain, then we can actually get that done, because it does cost quite a bit of money, and I'll go into this in a little more detail tomorrow night, that, you know, getting a firm in here to run that for us, it's not cheap. So we don't want to just spend that money. We want to be good stewards, you know, of the ratepayers' money. So when we know the dates that we're to commit to, then we can go out and show that it's not just renewables, it's whatever's cheapest on the grid. So if we can buy, you know, from some power company, you know, the energy levels, the capacity levels that we need, then that's what we would pursue. And it's not going to be a complete replacement of those units. It's going to, it's a smaller number, and we're working on basically curves, per se, of what our load profiles are versus our generation, and then we would basically fill in the gaps with power purchases. So that's what basically would go into the RFP.
Alderman Redpath.
So Doug, what drives the, what drives the dates for Unit 33? What, is there an industry rule? Is there a state law?
Um, you know, and I've been pretty consistent with 33. It's really, you know, once the transmission grade upgrades are done in June of 2021, we want to keep it on through the summer, because that's when we could make some actual money off the unit, because when power prices are higher. Then we would want to retire that unit no sooner than the fall of 2021. So then we look at the backend, and we look at the compliance dates, and it's really, right now is where we can interpret things, is the fall of 2023 that we would have to close without trying to invest all these millions and millions of dollars in environmental compliance.
So why don't we go to 2023?
And that's, that could be done. You know, the only thing there is really, I guess, looking at what the annual losses are, you know, for the unit. And that really drives that decision on, do you want to close a little bit sooner or extend it out longer? Oh, yeah. The other thing that's in the presentation, again, I said at the last meeting, was the, as long as we can declare that we're going to, you know, basically officially certify that the units are going to close by May of this year, then we can get an, apply for the extension of closing the ash ponds and put that out to 2028.
Moving from 2021 to 2023 is not going to affect that. As long as we announce that date.
Right, right, yes. Yes, right.
So my problem with this ordinance is that date. That's my problem. And the reason is, is because I still think we have chances, and you guys are researching it, and I know I'm researching it with the people in the industry, to try to figure out a way to keep 33. But if we can't keep it, if it's not feasible, if it's not economical, we can't do it. But we got to try. We got to try, because there's a lot at stake. And what's at stake more than anything else is that we know what happened in Texas last year, where the one, the single plant down there had to go out on the grid and bought power for $9,000 a kilowatt. And we can't afford to do that. We'll be bankrupt. We need to make sure we have a reliable backup source, and if this don't work, it don't work. But then we take Alderman Hanauer's suggestion, and we go out and we get the lowest responsible bid on an RFP to have power lined up in case we have trouble with Dalton Four.
One of the other issues, and I'll get to that tomorrow night, and I did touch on it in the last presentation, is the ELG rule that just came out last month, where if we do keep 31, 32, or 33, that puts us into spending 45 to 50 million dollars on a new, basically biological treatment facility for the scrubber wastewater. So, and that has to be installed by 2023, and I can't remember the month.
I don't think you're going to get any argument about 31 and 32, Doug.
But I guess my point with that is that the engineering on that has to start, like, we would come probably in April with an ordinance, with proposals, you know, of, I would assume, if it's an estimate of 50 million, engineering's probably 10%. So maybe a $5 million ordinance to spend, and we'd have to commit to that.
But if we, if we give ourselves a little bit more time, we can figure that out. Because there's nobody on the city council that doesn't want to try to lower the rates for our ratepayers. That's what the whole, that's what the whole thing comes down to. And giving us a little time to figure this stuff out. And, you know, we wasted a lot of time this last year when we should have been out researching. And I'm not blaming you or Doug, or John, or anybody else. I think that we, there's a lot, everybody's confused, and there's a lot of, not misinformation, but a lack of information, especially to the city council. I think it's important that we get that time.
Anyone else?
Doug and I talked about this, but Alderwoman Conley reiterated it. We need the schedule. Dollar amount, the timeline, you know, so we need the specific date and how much money would have to be spent if we go forward in either direction.
Right.
I think that's, I think that's what the Aldermen want, as well as administration. So I think that's the whole key to it. That way, we know how much is going to be expected, because my line is, you know, we can say we don't have input into it, it can be the mayor's decision, so be it. The ordinances are going to come here. So those dollars for approval are going to come through the city council one way or the other. So it does, everybody should weigh in on that part of the process, so everybody's on the same page.
And let me say too, is that, you know, we'll have the rules laid out, but we do not have a cost for like the ACE rule, which is for the heat rate improvements that just got finalized. You know, I can say, just for example, on Unit 33, it could require that the economizer be replaced. That's millions and millions of dollars to replace that. If it requires us to basically to buy a new rotor for the turbine, because it'd have new blade designs to improve efficiencies, that's more millions of dollars that would have to be spent. There's no cost estimate for that. Alls I can say is that it's, the picture is bleak. It's, you know, the costs that we can share now are only going to get worse. So there is no situation where this is going to get better.
Alderman Fulgencie.
Yes, I thought all of the future costs to repair 33 were going to be covered by insurance.
Well, I'm talking about the, a heat rate rule where basically it requires all coal-fired plants to look at how they can improve efficiency of burning coal. So there's all these technologies that they list, I think there's six of them in the rule that they list, that say that you got to look at every single one, and then if you, if you can improve those areas, then you have to follow through with it. So that's where, and again, this rule is just finalized, I don't remember what time in December that it came out, but there's no really, no time for us to go out and do a study, because we'd have to hire a firm to actually do a study on units 31, 32, and 33 to figure that out.
If they have to rebuild them, wouldn't they have to rebuild them to present standards?
No, because you're, we're talking about, like, for the turbine itself, would be a new blade design that would improve efficiency. So there's a lot more detailed engineering that has to go into place versus just replacing it.
Alderman Gregory.
So, thank you. You know, I would echo Mr. Alderman Redpath. You know, I'm struggling with that, with that last 33 date. I mean, you know, on some of our studies, you know, I have seen some different days, such as 2023 and stuff. So I was, you know, it threw me for a little bit of a loop. So secondly, Alderman Hanauer, he had, he had asked originally, you know, what it would look like for those units to be taken down to the ground? Are those the units that we would consider putting heat in for the offices or?
Yes, yeah. Because those units provide the steam heat to the building, so that's why we'd have to install the HVAC system to, basically, you're building heat to heat those offices and everything, as well as some of the plant, because the water lines that run through there, they basically enter one side of the building, and they have to traverse the entire length of the structure. And in the last presentation, I did provide, I, I think it was like $7.5 to $10 million in the presentation, that was basically, that was estimated from a demo contractor that came in on site and said it, kind of gave us a range of what they're looking at to take the building to the ground. But again, that's something that we wouldn't do right, right away, because that's, the building still holds the inventory. It holds all our offices for the plant, not all of them, but quite a few of them.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Alderman McMenamin.
We've given reasons why we're going to, where the experts are telling us to close down the older units. And Doug, you mentioned the cost of environmental compliance going forward, and you've mentioned the excessive operational cost to run the older plants. But one reason we haven't given yet, which is a really important reason why we need to retire the two older plants, is because for the last 12 years, we've had excessive generation capacity. For the first 90 years of our utility, we just wanted enough generation capacity to take care of our native load. That means how much electricity we want to, we need within our customer base here in Springfield. But during the Dabland administration, they, and our current leadership within City Water, Light, and Power are no longer from that period. But during that period, the decision was made to, let's have excess generation capacity. Let's have more capacity than what we need for our native load, because that way we can sell onto the wholesale market and make a bunch of money. And that was a good plan when it first launched, right before the Great Recession. But what happened was, is that the Great Recession happened, and the price of electricity plunged downward. And so the discussion about reducing our excess capacity of generation, it started about, I'd say, seven years ago. And Alderman Turner, you can remember those early discussions, when we would ask, okay, why are we keeping all these plants? And the answers we received, and they were, at the time, sincere answers, was that, well, what if the price of electricity climbs up again? Then we'll have the excess capacity, and we can sell on the market, the wholesale market, and we can start making money again. The problem is, the price of electricity never came back up. It stayed flat. So we've been holding on to these older power plants, you know, with the hope early on that we'd get back to being able to sell in the open market. But we, you know, we had a budget report last week, and we're not selling on the wholesale market anymore. So we don't need that excess capacity any longer. And so it's kind of like, these older power plants, kind of think of them as the old wind contracts that we used to have. The difference is that with the wind contracts that lasted for 10 years, we obligated ourselves to buy power, electric power, at a, at a price that became higher than what the market did. But we were legally obligated to keep those power, those wind power contracts until they expired. But we're not obligated on these older units, 31 and 32. We've got the freedom to cut loose of them, just like we wish we could have had the freedom to cut loose of those, of those wind power contracts. But we couldn't because we were legally obligated. So, and then, of course, the other difference is, you know, with the wind power contracts, we didn't have employees at risk. But we do have employees at risk with units 31 and 32. But, you know, our leadership and our mayor, we're trying to do everything we can to moderate the problems to our employees. So if we don't have a motion to place this on debate tonight, then we can always put it on debate a week from tonight. So I don't know how, what the consensus is of the council.
Alderman Redpath.
You know, I hate to ever say I agree with you, Joe, but I just want to tell you, we should have been phasing these things out years ago. And I agree with that point. Them holding on to the units to generate capacity was probably, we've never been really good at being out in the market selling power. It's not been a good deal. Something that we got to think about, and we're talking about the future now, we're not talking about what's going on last year or 10 years ago. You know, if the, if the, if the political environment at the federal level changes this year, then the natural grass prices are probably going to be going up, because the fracking is going to stop. Fracking's going to stop, and that's been said throughout all the campaigns that's going on. We got to think about how that's going to affect our prices. And Doug, I don't know, you don't have a calculation for that type of thing. But we know that that possible, that's very possibly going to happen. I know that the coal industry is going to have trouble too. So we, we got to figure out how we're going to bring power to our people for the best price we possibly can. We can't depend on something that we don't have any control over. The one thing about holding on to 33 for a little while, it gives us a little opportunity to figure out that climate. And extending it one more year is not going to cost us that much more money. We, I know, I don't think there's any argument by, by any of the aldermen in here about 31 and 32. We know they got to go. They're antiquated, they're, they're, they're not efficient, and 33's got some problems of itself. But if we can hold on to that until we can find out what the climate is, I think that's an important thing to do.
Alderman Hanauer?
Can, what if we, is, is there a time crunch right now that we need to, can we hold this for two weeks and to hold it in committee and deal with it in two weeks? That way, we hear, we, we hear the, the, the presentation tomorrow night, we've got two weeks to get questions answered, and we go from there.
I mean, honestly, there's, there's, on 33, I mean, you know, I think you kind of said it, we're almost out of time now with the, specifically on 33 would be dry ash, dry fly ash conversion by the fall of 2021. So that's a year from this fall. So the engineering, procurement, install.
But two weeks, I'm talking about.
I understand, I understand, I know. But we're almost out of time already. So but can we, can we get, wait two weeks? Probably, yeah, I think so. I mean, we're already kind of behind the date ball, so two more weeks is probably not going to make a difference for, for that. 31, 32, we do have some decisions to make when it comes to the capacity market. It's a little bit different, it's a little bit more, you know, a quicker decision on if we want to suspend the units or commit to retiring them by the 13th of February. Just, it's the rules of the capacity market. So that kind of affects things too. But I don't, doesn't sound like you're, you know, everybody's real too interested in 31, 32 as far as that being an issue. It's more of the, the challenge of 33. So, you know.
Well, and again, ma'am, ma'am chair, you know, okay, so we wait, we, you, you get us to where our backs are at the wall, where we're almost out of time and we got to make a decision. With a potential, this, you know, the potential, we could have rates to raise, we could have a, we could have general revenue or our, our corporate fund with, with, that, that loses 800,000 or more, we don't know. And but, but it's, again, we, it's a, it's a vital decision, and we're told that we don't have, we got to do something right away. That's, that's not fair to the council, number one. In my mind, that's not fair to the council. But I'm, I'd make a request that we hold it in committee for two weeks and, and we'll look at it then. Do I need to make a motion or?
There's not a motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion that we hold it in committee.
Second.
Discussion on the motion.
Discussion on the motion.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out that our experts that we paid good money to a year ago, they advised us to retire units 31 and 32 two months ago. That was, that was a recommendation. So, you know, we were just delaying, everyone in this room doesn't have to be, you know, at the expert level to know everything that's going on, but we did pay consultants to give us good advice, and they recommended that we retire 31 and 32 ass off two months ago. That, that was the recommendation. They gave it to us a year ago. So I, I don't think it's a good idea to keep delaying this. I think we just, you know, Alderman Redpath, if, if you, you wanted to offer an amendment to this resolution to just strike the reference to units 33, to give us more time on 33, and then we can go ahead and, and do what we got to do with units 31 and 32. And, and we can think about 33 somewhat longer.
Alderman, I, I think that two weeks is not going to make a difference, and I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, two weeks is not going to make a difference if, if it's something we need. That way, we hear the presentation tomorrow. We're going to have a lot of discussion tomorrow. This is going to be a long night tomorrow night. So bottom line is that I think the delay is fine, and, and we're going to get to this ordinance. I promise you, it's going to get there.
Well, since we've had less than a week's notice about this meeting tomorrow night, not all of us can be here. Some of us have other obligations. So I hope this is streaming tomorrow night or it's going to be broadcast at some point. So those of us that can't be here.
Take your phone with you. We'll make sure it's streaming.
Fantastic.
I'll just leave my phone on.
Okay, just leave your phone on. Thank you.
Motion on the floor, ma'am chairman.
I guess, so just to Alderman, Alderwoman DeCenzo's comment, I can't be here either. I have two conflicting things going on. And if, if we could just get that hand, the handouts or whatever written information is going to be distributed, and if it was ready for tomorrow night, I'm not understanding why we couldn't have it for tonight, but that's neither here nor there. But if we could just get that information, that would be great.
Alderwoman Conley?
Can I just ask, will the meeting tomorrow night be broadcast and then livestreamed and also recorded so we'll have a record of it? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin?
And quite frankly, I'll be prepared to talk about it next week at council.
I'm comfortable with that.
So what's the motion? Motion on the floor is to hold it in committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion for roll call vote.
That's right.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Fulgenzey?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Aye.
Alderwoman DeCenzo?
No.
Alderman McMenamin?
No.
Alderwoman Conley?
No.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
You have seven ayes and three nays.
So it's held in committee. Before we move on to the next ordinance, I'd like to acknowledge the Ukrainian delegation that's here in town. Would you like to come up and introduce yourselves?
Hi, so I'm Janet Kenny, Chairman of the Springfield Commission on International Visitors. Why don't you guys come around on either side of me? So we have a delegation here tonight from Open World Leadership Center. They're administered by the U.S.-Ukraine Foundation, and they bring groups from Eurasia, emerging leaders to be exact, to meet with leaders in our country and learn about democracy and how we do it, and to share ideas. And they've been meeting with some of our city leaders and department heads, and so far they've met with Alderman Donlin, and they're going to be meeting, they've met with Director McCarty, they're going to be meeting with Director Bottom and Mayor Langfelder, and who am I missing? Frank Lesko, city clerk, and who am I missing? Carol Zirkle, Commissioner Carol Zirkle's been out with me. What other directors are we meeting with and department heads? Purchasing Agent Long, and then state officials as well and other officials. So they're going to introduce themselves. We have an interpreter here and liaison, and then the five delegates from Ukraine. And we do this every year, and it's really a rewarding program, and we're very happy to have them. So, and did I miss anybody from the city, Carol, that's seen them? What Jane think of? I did get Nate Bottom, yes. Yeah, they're going to be, visit the fleet office. So, okay, so Svetlana, are you going to do the?
Right here.
There you are, there you are. I'm looking at Oksana, I'm looking at Oksana now. Okay, here you go.
Do not touch the microphone.
Oh, don't touch the microphone. I've been all over it.
You want all of them to introduce themselves?
My name is Swishow Vitali. I'm a alderman of the L'Veve City Council.
My name is Tatiana. I am a deputy head of the non-governmental organization located in Dnipro. We deal with transparency, accountability of local governments in my country.
My name is Oksana Pilemska.
I'm very happy to be in your city. I love your city very much. I work in the Department of Public Procurements, and in the past, I'm a journalist. Have a good evening, everyone.
My name is Lastenka Ivan.
I'm a head of the Department of Market Analysis in Mariupol City Council.
My name is Lina Brynina. I work in the city council. And I'm a head of the Department of Legal, Legal Department. Executive Department of Starobelsk City Council, Lugansk region.
And our facilitator, he's here to make everybody here.
Hi, everybody. As Janet said, my role is to make and ensure that everybody is happy about this visit. I make good jokes, bad jokes for them. I, I try to entertain also, but also I have legal education and political science education, so I know a lot about the system. I also try to give them some, some insights and some information that might be of their use. And on, on behalf of, of the whole delegation, it's really an honor that you are hosting us, that you're showing us all the beauty things you have in the city. And if you, if you're ever in Ukraine, just give us a call and we will also make you happy as well, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. And so I'd like to say that we have host families here tonight, and I'm, since I can't touch the microphone, I have to stand on my toes. See, so we have Commissioner Carol Zirkle and Commissioner Joyce Narduli, and other host families, we have Barb Mulaney, and who else is here? Pilar Mayorga, who's the commissioner. What other host families are here tonight? Stan Beshida is hosting, but they've, they've been carpooling, the Wartmans are hosting. Where are the rest of my host families? That's everybody that's here tonight. Anyway, they've done a great job because they make it more personal. But I do want to thank, and then Scott Dahl has been very supportive of our program. I want to thank him for that. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving along to public, public safety.
Public Safety, 2020-044, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm Systems, ILEAS, for the use and storage of the 2019 Ford F-150 for training purposes and potential deployments of the Mobile Field Force Team for the Springfield Police Department. Move for consent. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
Public Works, 2020-029, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the city of Springfield, Illinois, and Martin J. Calacara for property located at 3316 Lightfoot Drive. Move for consent.
Second. It should be on the poll. It's being debated.
Debate.
Yes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
2020-030, a resolution temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State routes 97 and 29 Jefferson Street from Fifth Street to Ninth Streets for the annual Christmas Parade on December 5, 2020, for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for omnibus vote on 2020-030 through 2020-034. These are all resolutions for parades for the coming 12 months.
Second.
Clerk, can you read them into the record, please?
Will do. 2020-031, a resolution for temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State routes 97 and 29 Jefferson Street from Fifth Street to Ninth Streets for the annual Halloween Parade to be held on October 24, 2020, for the Office of Public Works. 2020-032, a resolution for temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State routes 97 and 29 Jefferson Street from Fifth Street to Ninth Streets for the Annual Trades and Labor Council Labor Day Parade to be held on September 7, 2020, for the Office of Public Works. 2020-033, a resolution for temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State routes 97 and 29 Jefferson Streets from Fifth Street to Ninth Streets for the St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 14, 2020, for the Office of Public Works. 2020-034, a resolution requesting temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State routes 55 Sixth Street from St. Joseph's to Stevenson Drive for the Church of Little Flower Street Festival on May 22, 2020, for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Finance, 2020-043, an ordinance establishing a pace area and establishing a page program for finance for the acquisition and construction of energy projects. Move for debate. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020-049, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Sangamon County, Illinois Board of Health for animal control services effective January 1, 2020, through February 29, 2020, for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move to debate. Second. Any discussion? Yes.
So, and I don't know, Mayor, if this is for you or for Bill, but I've, I've had some comments come up around service dogs and, and how animal control handles those if they've been taken there. I would just like a little clarification on that. I think they're, I'm not comfortable yet with, with all of this, this contract. And so I'd like to, if we could maybe have someone from Animal Control here next week, but I have some issues and questions about that. I will just tell you specifically, an animal that was, that had slipped out of its collar had gotten loose, picked up by Animal Control on, I believe, like on, at the end of the day on Friday, they're not, or Saturday, they're not open Sunday, and then they were closed for a federal holiday. So then the service dog was in their possession while they were closed and the owner didn't have the dog, and there were no special considerations made for releasing a service dog. And I would like if, I think that's something that we need to be taking into consideration with the contract moving forward.
Is someone coming tomorrow?
We, we will reach out and ensure that someone from Animal Control comes next Tuesday.
Thank you. I, I think it's something that we need to, may need to be added to this contract along with some other questions, so.
I also personally have a big problem with being charged extra for service calls. It's, right now, the record for coming out for service calls is awful, and I've expressed this many, 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 many times. And I, I have no confidence that if we get charged per service call, that they will come out even if there's a charge. So it's supposed to be in the contract already. Why are we, why are we agreeing to pay extra for it? I mean, we have a record of the Springfield Police Department calling again and again and again and again, and no one coming out. So how is that going to change with a $75 fee?
I, I think some enforcement provisions in this contract need to be strengthened.
Yeah, Director McCarty, if you would have whoever from Animal Control and participate in those discussions, I think Brian McFadden might have been, but they should be here next Tuesday. Otherwise, it'll be difficult to pass it.
Alderwoman Turner?
I agree that there has to be some type of enforcement or, or what happens if you, if you don't do what you're supposed to do, that's in the, that's in the, in the agreement. Up until now, it's just been, you know, this is the agreement, and then they kind of do whatever they want to do and don't really adhere to the agreement. So I think that we have to add if, some type of enforcement trigger in the agreement.
Anyone else on this one? So the motion was for debate?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020-050, an ordinance authorizing a sale of surplus real property, commonly known as 2840 and 2860, Adelai Stevenson Drive, in the amount of $315,000. Move to debate.
Second. Yes. Right? Yeah, that's.
Discussion.
Alderman? Alderwoman Turner?
I had asked last week to be added as a co-sponsor.
Yes.
As did I.
Yes. I'm not in charge of that. I've been, I've been in charge of enough this month.
You can't do anything about it?
No.
Darn.
Gavel.
Let me take.
Thank you. So this is moved to debate?
Discussion?
Discussion, yes.
Just a couple of questions. A month or so ago, we had an ordinance that allowed for the submission.
A month or so ago, we had an ordinance that allowed for the sale of surplus property that could be done outside of our normal rules for selling surplus property. Is that this property? Or was that a different property?
There actually, my memory is on those, I believe there were three, and this is two, there might have been four. This is two of that group. And this was negotiated, there was an appraisal done for the properties, and this falls within the normal process of within 80% of the appraised value, and we can supply all that information.
Who's the buyer for this property?
The proposed buyer is actually Wilkerson, who, the gentleman who owns Wilkerson Garage. So the proposal before you, and this has been going on for some period of time, would be to purchase the Wilkerson property, which is on a lease, and the property behind, which is the Stevenson Inn. And if you recall, that particular property was delayed at some considerable length because of a dispute between that particular property owner and the bank, but that has now generally been all resolved. So subsequent to that, then there were appraisals done. Then there were discussions with Mr. Wilkerson's, not only Mr. Wilkerson, but also his attorney. And so this was the price for basically buying out the property, so the leasehold would go away. And then he would also be responsible for the demolition and cleanup cost for the Stevenson Inn, which is that existing building there in the back.
Yeah, I'm familiar with Mr. Wilkerson. He owns the service station at the corner of Chatham Road and Monroe, the southwest corner. Do, do we know what his intended use is for the property?
It is my understanding that he intends to expand his current operation there, may end up using either that for parking or possibly maybe a storage building. It, it's really not appropriate for retail. If you recall, it's actually down at the bottom of the road there, directly behind his property. It has no frontage.
Thank you.
Do you still want it on debate, Alderman?
I think I'm in favor of this, but in case other questions arise, I'd like to have the opportunity next week.
Okay. And we can, if you'd like, I mean, just by way of information, if you'd like us to circulate like the summaries of the appraisals and so on, be happy to do that. Now that, now that it's been negotiated, all of that is, you know, of course, can be public.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
I, I just wanted to say that this is, this is property is in Ward 3 along Stevenson Drive corridor. And I'm excited and happy that we're finally at a place where this is on the agenda for sale. We've been working on this probably for longer than any of us want to know. I would say at least three years we've been working on this. This, the property behind his service station, as you know, has been the subject of many complaints and quite a blighted eyesore along one of our entryways into the city. So with this purchase, that'll all be cleaned up and, and I would say at significant benefit to the city because he is going to take care of the demoing and, and, you know, cleaning, cleaning all of that area up. And so it will actually put some property back on the tax rolls that has not been, that has actually been a drain on the city because that property, they've not paid their lease in many years. And, and so it, it does put a parcel back on the tax rolls that will be of benefit to the city. So I would, I would ask everyone to support this ordinance.
Alderwoman Conley.
And I'm sorry, I, I thought, because it was a sale of property, I thought it was supposed to go on debate. So I, I guess if Alderman McMenamin would consider changing it, I have no problem with the consent agenda for this item.
I think it just takes one person to ask for it to put on debate, so.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
General City Business, 2020-015, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to sale of business by Boons Limited doing business as Boons Saloon located at 301 West Edwards Street.
Motion for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Present.
Noted. 2020-016, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Stanks Incorporated doing business as Boons Saloon located at 301 West Edwards Street.
Motion for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Noted. 2020-035, an ordinance amending Chapter 101 of the 1988 Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended to decrease the number of commissioners appointed to the Historic Sites Commission from 15 to 11 and decreasing the frequency of required meetings from monthly to quarterly.
Move consent. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
2020-036, an ordinance authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Scott Madden Incorporated.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion?
This, Madam Chair, this purpose of this ordinance is to help us with the decommissioning of the units.
Yes.
Yes, that as well as the restructuring, you know, with regards to transitioning employees. I think that's a part of it as well.
Thank you. Can we get the scope of work and all that, please?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020-037, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number AJCYZ-03066 from the Illinois Primary Healthcare Association, IPHCA, in an amount of $50,000 for funding of the 2020 census and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in an amount of $50,000.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020-038, an ordinance authorizing payment of $61,040.25 to Kenneth Yogres, an office of public utilities employed to settle workers' compensation claim for case number 18-WC-37052.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020-039, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Lincolnland Community College, District 526, doing business as Bistro Verdi located at 5250 Shepherd Road.
Move for consent.
Second.
Madam Chairman, the lady from Lincolnland is here. Would you like to come up and say a few words? Please.
Hello. So this goes along with your next ordinance.
Can you please state your name?
I'm Jolene Lamb. I am the coordinator of the Lincolnland Community College Culinary Institute. And we are requesting a change in our liquor license. As some of you may know, we offer a handful of classes that are hands-on cooking that are open to the public. And we also have about 10 specialty dinners each year. And those are put on by guest chefs from the community. And up until this point, we have served wine and beer with our dinners and our classes. But these are educational, and we'd like to expand. And as an example would be if we were doing a themed class or themed dinner that had maybe a different type of cuisine, maybe cultural or just regional, like say a New Orleans-style dinner, we'd like to be able to incorporate maybe a cocktail like a Sazerac, which is, you know, famously known in New Orleans. And so we are looking to kind of be able to expand into opening that world up to some of our guests and our students that take these classes and dinners.
This is a wonderful team they have out there. They put out a great product, and I hope everybody can support this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion for consent is on the floor. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Noted. 2020-040, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class E liquor licenses by one due to the desire to change liquor license classification by Lincolnland Community College, District 526, doing business as Bistro Verdi located at 5250 Shepherd Road.
Move for consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Noted. 2020-041, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class AA liquor licenses by one due to closure of business by the Field Bar and Grill Hookout Lounge LLC located at 933 West North Grand Avenue.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Noted. 2020-042, a resolution allocating 2020 bond volume cap.
A move for consent.
Second, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Anybody from Oped here? Nope. I think I ask this question every time we do this. What do we do with this, the bonding cap? Maybe.
This is, just very briefly, you recall that we do do this every year. The city is reserving the ability to do industrial revenue bonds by this. That's allowed by state law. If we don't take action, it automatically goes to the state. Later in the year, sometimes we are approached to allocate it to another entity. So this is simply to preserve the right to use it if we choose to. If we don't take action, then it, then it simply goes over to the state.
Okay, I get that, but have we been approached on projects and stuff, and have we actually done it?
I don't, I don't think that there's been recent projects for industrial revenue bonds because those are typically taxable. So a lot of times, there are actual better, different types of tax credits. But we can, if you like, Val's not here tonight, but we can get the list of type of projects that are eligible.
Because the one thing I'd like to look at, if we're not, if nobody's approaching us to use it, is I think in the city of Urbana, they allocate part of the bonds to a bank and helps out with housing assistance for mortgages and stuff, for down payment assistance. And so I, I think we should start looking at that, be proactive and looking at ways to utilize it other than waiting for people to approach us and how to use it. Just to point on it, so.
So there's a motion on the floor for consent. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020-046, an ordinance amending Chapter 33 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended, adding a housing policy council.
Move for debate for the reason that I, I think this is a real good idea, but I just want the opportunity to talk about it more next week.
Any other discussion? Alderwoman Turner.
So I have a question. And I think that there were some emails that were floating around maybe last week. And I think that there was some confusion. I know I was confused. Maybe nobody else was confused. But that, the, a couple of days before that, at the council meeting, there was some discussion about an ad hoc group getting together to talk about housing regulations and, and how they could, and enforcement, code enforcement, those kinds of things.
Yes.
And then shortly after that, this ordinance was on first reading. So, so can you just explain, maybe for no one else but me, the different, that these are two different, these are two different groups, and can you just explain what this group, what this commission would do?
Yep, Madam Chair. Is that all right?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. You're right, the ad hoc group would take a look at the housing code with regards to enforcement. I think due to the rat infestation, that's where that discussion came from. And Public Works will, if they haven't convened the group, they will do so with the alderman's input on that. This one is taking a look at housing in general, you know, the getting, making use of our vacant properties, you know, coming up with a strategy. The intent is to get the resources around the table, you know, whether it's the banks, Illinois Association Realtors, developers, so we can come up with a strategy or recommendation how to improve development with, association with affordable housing in Springfield.
Alderwoman Turner, or Alderwoman Conley, sorry.
She's got woman, right?
Yeah.
And, and I just, thank you, Alderwoman Turner. I appreciate highlighting the fact that there's differences here. Mayor, if you could, what, what makeup is, who's going to be on this council? How often do you, will they be meeting? And are we going to be getting, will they be bringing, will we get a report at council to let us know sort of what plans and, and concepts are being developed by this?
Yeah, corporate council of the.
It's in the ordinance.
With regards to that, I know it's a, be a Realtor representative, developer, I believe, someone from a TIF. And then I know three at large, and then I think financial person. Those would be the individuals that would participate. But yeah, the intent is to take a look at, you know, like Enos Park, they have a TIF plan. We should be updating those. So it would be a more proactive approach with regards to having the different resources, discussing strategies. But it would come before the council. Any type of, you know, financial commitment by the city would have to come before the city council as well as the appointments for this. I've been in discussion with the Illinois Association Realtors, and they're trying to do this throughout the state. I don't think they've done it yet, but this might be the first one of its nature.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This proposed Housing Policy Council, Mayor, I think is a really outstanding idea. I think can, can really help our older neighborhoods in particular. The, the write-up says that this will promote the development of housing policies to encourage and support homeownership by middle and lower-income citizens. And so those would be typically the buyers that would be in older neighborhoods, oftentimes tipping point neighborhoods. And we have to come up with policies that will encourage homeownership and make homeownership more affordable. And last week, we had the discussion about the 10,000 older homes that have lead pipes coming into those homes. And we talked about how if you're in a position of need, you may be able to have that work done without costs. But really, I think we have to think of ways to extend that policy to entire neighborhood areas within a boundary to make homes more affordable for future buyers that won't be at risk of having to pay for the lead pipes, service pipes, that's the water coming into the home. And then we need policies for the lateral pipes. The lateral pipes are the pipes that take the sewage from the home out to the, the main sewer, which is usually in the middle of the road. And that's now typically an expense entirely for the homeowner. And so we got to find, and if you, your lateral pipe bringing the sewer, sewage from your home out to the pipe goes bad because of roots or whatever, old trees get in there and entangle. It's about a $7,000 repair job for the homeowner. So Mayor, there's a lot of opportunity here where the city itself can encourage investment in our older homes, in our older neighborhoods, and make those homes more affordable for the middle and lower-income citizens, as this is stated here. And when we do that, we hopefully stabilize the tax base and the real estate assessment so we don't have problems like we're seeing in the neighborhoods surrounding Pillsbury where the medium home prices keep falling because of lack of investment and initiative by the city. So this has really got a lot of potential. And Mayor, is there someone who proposed this to you? Any individuals that need to be acknowledged?
I have worked with the Illinois Association Realtors, but, you know, from my banking background, I thought that was always a key component. Numerous aldermen brought up about the vacate lots. You know, we need to get them on the tax rolls. And one lacking source is getting everybody around the table that has a interest and the capacity to do that. Because what we need to do is leverage our funding ability, especially with our TIP districts, things of that nature. So getting the financial resources with the financial institutions or the developers or Realtors that will help, I believe, come up with a viable strategy and look beyond what we're currently doing and improving those opportunities.
Mayor, I would just like to add that I hope you consider some of the neighborhood associations, whether it be Icon or someone else, to be at the table for this because the home builders are not the ones who want to come into older neighborhoods and build affordable housing.
Well, that's why we're trying to put them in there.
And that's what we want. So, you know.
Right.
We, we hope, these are usually opposing forces. So we, if, if that's the intent, then I think this is a great idea.
I think that it's.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that it's also important, I'm a, I'm a big proponent of having people from the target population to be at the table because you can't do things for. Because you can't do things for people, you have to do them with people. So I don't, I was looking at the make, I was looking at the description, and I was looking at the makeup, and I saw where it was pretty delineated out who was going to be on it, except there was like three at large. So I hope that you will use those at-large appointments to include someone from these target neighborhoods. Because I think that that's important.
Yeah, if you want to amend to include a member of Icon, you know, we could do that. That's why I put the TIF one in there, so by all means. Then still, you have the at-large to draw from other individuals that can bring resources to the table.
Yes.
I just, I would like to second Alderwoman Turner. I have a significant portion of older neighborhoods in Ward Eight and some very dedicated homeowners who are working very hard to maintain their property values. So I appreciate this initiative. I hope that it's, that we get some actionable results out of this.
Right.
So, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020-047, an ordinance accepting RFP number CV 20-25 with Sinclair Television of Illinois LLC for the 2020 digital marketing campaign for an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move for consent? Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
2020-048, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with the Springfield-Sangamon County Illinois Board of Health for animal control services for an amount not to exceed $249,068.47 from March 1, 2019 through February 29, 2020, for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move for debate?
Second. If I could just say again, same issues and same concerns for this.
Ditto. Ditto.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, do we have any unfinished business coming before the council or the committee?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I do. And this is Corporation Council. My, the House on Lincoln that has come up frequently with its rat issue is on the agenda for the administrative court this week. I just wanted to give you an update so that you're aware going into that hearing that I'm getting reports from neighbors that they are needing to take preventative measures to stop that rats getting into their properties. This is a serious concern. This house has not been addressed, and this owner is, negligence is causing real impacts for responsible landlord, or own homeowners in my ward who are doing, trying to do what we were just talking about, maintain their neighborhoods against their older neighborhoods. So I just wanted to give that update and make sure that it's clear in everyone's mind that I'm still very concerned about the status of this home and this landlord's negligence in our neighborhoods. So, and if I, that's new business, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Well, I just, I believe my other constituent, who is one of our girls who came to council tonight, asked if she couldn't stay because she has homework, which, by the way, is my husband's fault, she's in his class. But she asked, I asked, we were talking about issues that come before council. I think she's planning on running for mayor, so heads up. She has a lot of ideas, but the one issue she wanted me to bring up for her, her name is Jenny, is the issue of providing more resources and housing for the homeless in our community. That was at the top of a fourth grader's mind. So I applaud everyone who stayed and everyone who came, but we've got a lot of hope and a lot of energy and ideas in this community, and I appreciate that very much.
Alderwoman Turner?
I just had a question. I know I asked for, if, for clarification on the zoning for the consumption lounges, was that, did you have a chance to look into that?
I think it'll be ready Friday.
Okay. So we do have to do, so we do have to do an amendment?
Yeah, you're talking about the, the issue about both a report and then what else? Was the, there were two items on the zoning?
No.
About the, just, the issue of the, that there is an incongruity, we do have to do a zoning change.
Yes, that was, okay. Thank you. And that would be ready Friday?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alder and Red Path?
Thank you, Chairman. Darrell, you don't need to come up here, but the habitual offender we have at 85 Lackinwood is not cleaned up still. And that's, I know that Corporation Council's been looking into that. I know you went out there and checked that out along with another house, but would you please go out again? The neighbors are still complaining about it. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
Just a reminder, CWP's forum mainly discussed 33, but all of the units will be tomorrow at 5:30 in the council chambers, and it will be livestreamed as well.
One item of new business, are we done with unfinished business? We have a March meeting that is scheduled on the 17th, which also happens to be primary day in Illinois. Is there any interest in moving that to the 18th?
I'm not running.
Or do you want to keep it?
Selfish Doris would like to...
Move it to the 18th?
Move it to the 18th, if everyone's okay with that. I know, you know, when we were doing the calendar, we moved the November meeting, and it's basically my fault that this one was overlooked, because I would have done it at the same time.
Well, you know, that's a council meeting. I'm leaving for Arizona on the 18th at 2:43, so I don't know if I'll be able to check in by phone or not, but I will if I can, if we change it.
I won't be here on the 17th. I have to be out of town for work, and I do have two zoning issues up, so I would like to be here.
Is that a zoning, what's, how's that?
Monday?
No, with Monday? No. The Monday before an election?
We should be able to, the issue when we change the zoning dates is the publication of the newspaper. So we should have time to do that if we can decide that tonight. We'll just have to adjust the publications.
We did Monday.
The Monday before an election?
Well, I mean, what about Monday, Doris? I don't care either way.
I won't be here Monday. But it's not about me, I'm just putting it out there.
I disagree.
We can't do Monday because Planning and Zoning Commission meet that night, so.
That's Wednesday.
A Wednesday.
They meet Wednesday, the 18th?
They meet on Wednesday, correct? They, it'll be on Wednesday, so Monday will be okay for us. Oh, so they're in this room, they're in this room on the 18th?
Yeah.
Well, you know what, just leave it. I mean, if, yeah, just leave it. I don't want to, I don't want to create havoc.
You're gonna need a break anyway.
I don't want to create havoc for everyone.
You're gonna need a break anyway.
Probably.
And I'd also like to take a moment for a moment of silence. Three members of our community and a dog were lost in a plane crash this afternoon. So if we could just take a moment, we don't know the identities yet, but I think everyone is, should just take a second. Is there any other new business? Yes, Mayor?
Two things. One is HSHS St. John's, they recently were recognized for, they've done something unique. They were doing remodeling, and they had a cath lab. And Dr. Goswami, he actually was able to get them to donate it to Doma, India. And so we were able to, you know, they transferred the cath lab. It's due to, I'll read the plaque, they recognize the city of Springfield for giving contribution, but it's really driven by HSHS St. John's, Dr. Goswami, and also E.J. Kuiper. But it reads Central India Christian Mission, Doma, India. We are grateful for your significant contribution of the cath lab, CT scan, and ultrasound sonogram machine to the mission hospital, Doma, India. And it has the date for the city of Springfield. But what Dr. Goswami said, you know, it helped thousands of people in Springfield receive better health, but over there, it will help millions because it's in a remote area. They don't have this type of technology, but it will save lives. So it goes to show you how, how much of an impact our medical community has across the world. You know, it's, we're the, you know, we're a great regional provider of healthcare with regards to Memorial, St. John's, SIU School of Medicine, Springfield Clinic. And it goes without saying, the great services they do, they're at the heart of the Midwest, they have an impact on the country, now they have an impact on the world. And it goes without saying, we can't thank them enough.
Any other new business? Any citizens request to address the, oh, sorry, Doris?
No, I just wanted to, I know that a lot of the students and young people that were here had to leave because of other, because of school and those types of things. But I do want to thank all of the parents, guardians, grandparents, community leaders that bought their students out tonight. I think it was an absolutely great array of age and sex and the whole, the whole deal that came. And I think that's wonderful. Usually, when we have students that come in, they're here for the beginning of the meeting to be acknowledged for, you know, some type of accolade that they received, and then they're out the doors. So to actually stay and see a council meeting in action and see the impact that it does have on your everyday life, I think that that's absolutely wonderful. So thank you very much for participating.
And then just a reminder, I believe girls' city tournaments this week, is that correct, Assistant Chief Scarlett?
Where's that, there it is.
At Southeast High School.
Any other new business? Any citizens to address the council? Elizabeth Scrafford?
He should probably go first, but he says no. Good evening.
Oh, wait. Does that mean you're gonna be mean?
We'll see. Good evening. Nice to see you all. I haven't been here in a little while. Tonight was obviously an important meeting. I'll be back tomorrow, and we'll try to be brief so I can hopefully reserve some wards to speak then, but I understand you all won't be here. I am curious who will be here tomorrow night from the council members? One, two, three. The mayor will be here, Proctor, four, five, and then I'm assuming Red Path will be here? So six out of the 10, right? Okay. I took, I changed my plans tomorrow. I was supposed to be in Wisconsin, because this is important to me. I understand with just eight days' notice or seven days' notice, it's hard for folks to make it to a meeting like this. But I did just want to point out that it is very important for a lot of folks in Springfield. I understand it's important to the workers, too. Sitting through tonight's council meeting, you know, as a resident of Springfield and someone who has been sitting in these meetings for the last five years, I am pretty frustrated and disappointed in many of you, to be quite honest. I have sat through meeting after meeting and watched CWP give presentation after presentation. And you all are public servants of this city. It is your duty to read what is before you, including the Integrated Resource Plan. Most of the questions that you asked tonight have been asked and answered many times. They are on presentations, they are on CWP's website. It is not hard to find. So shame on you, quite honestly. I'm disappointed in you, and I expect more. And I think that residents and citizens of Springfield deserve more from what you have given them tonight. I hope for better in the coming weeks, because you all have this information. And to pretend like you don't is deceiving. Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer?
When did, excuse me, ma'am, when, when did we get the, what's going to happen to the rates? We have not gotten anything about rates. We did not get anything about, about what it's going to do to the pilot. So don't come up here and chastise us when we didn't get some of the things. Where's the RFP for when we buy power?
There isn't.
We have not gotten one RFP for power. Have we gotten an RFP for power, Mayor? No. So don't come up here and chastise us as a council because you don't like the outcome.
There's a lot of truth to what she's saying.
As a, as a resident of Springfield, that is my right.
And part of a special interest, it's been trying to shut down our, our power plant for, since I've been in council.
There are a lot of issues at CWP that I've been very honest about for the last five and a half years. Now, each of you, right, each of you has a leadership role in the city of Springfield, or my words strong, yes, but I stand by them. Because what each of you has a chance to do is say, you know what, I want to submit an RFP for power. What has happened in each one of these studies, what it has shown is that the cost of continuing to operate units one and three will just go up. Those numbers have been proven, and it has been shown that buying power off the electricity grid will be cheaper. You have four studies, including the city's own analysis, that show you that.
We need to know what it's going to do to the rates. I know you don't care.
I do care.
But the ratepayers sure as hell care, because I get calls all the time.
I'm a ratepayer, Alderman. I pay both CWP and Ameren rates because of the apartment I live in and I have for years.
Rates can only get, could only be better with the resolution.
You don't know that, Joe.
Well, that's all the information we'll be getting, that this is avoiding costs. So the rates would be worse if we don't do what's been recommended to us.
The only, the only statement I will take issue with is the fact that not all of us can so easily change our plans.
I know, I know, Alderwoman.
Yes.
And I understand that. I am making a point. And I appreciate that. I have, though, been in a lot of CWP special meetings where many of you have been missing. And I understand folks have kids, folks have jobs, you've got other stuff going on. But it does seem like the, the issue in the city where the can keeps getting kicked down the road. I heard Alderman Red Path say we should have done this years ago. No one wanted to do it years ago. No one, no one took leadership to do it years ago. So you can be mad at me, that's okay, I'm used to folks being mad at me. I got a little bit of my Grandma Scrafford in me with her good old frying pan, that's how my grandpa stopped drinking, she hit him over the head, he made it. But like, at some point, it's scary, and it's scary as a leader in the city to make hard decisions. But as I say to myself every morning when I get up, well, Elizabeth, you can do hard things. And you all can do hard things, I believe that. And you can get mad at me for saying that, that's fine, but you all can do hard things. And the time has come for you to make some hard decisions. And if you do it right, you can do right by the workers. Because if you put a date that's a couple years out on unit three, right, you make the decision now, you put a date out, you've got some, some deadlines with decisions to make, as Doug said later, you put a date out that's a couple years in advance, then you can work with the workers to make sure that they have what they need in the next few years. So you all got options, but you got to step up to the plate. Thank you.
Wait, Alderwoman Turner has something to say.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind. Number one, I'm not mad at you because I don't, I don't get mad at people. That doesn't, that doesn't do anyone any good. It just depletes energy that could be used for, for something else. However, I do take exception to your admonishment, admonishment, because I feel like that me asking questions and requiring information before I make a difficult decision is exhibiting extreme leadership. And I think that in my position, I have a right and an obligation to ask those questions. And the questions that I asked tonight and the information that I saw tonight, that's not the first time that I've asked these questions. I think the other thing that people should, that you and others should know, that the questions that, and the discussions that we have here are in addition to the questions and the discussions that we have in meetings and in telephone calls and by, and by email. So just because you don't see or hear a discussion here, doesn't mean that that discussion hasn't taken place. So, you know, I think that it's, frustration is a difficult thing, and it comes out in a lot of different ways. And, and I appreciate the fact that, that you're frustrated. Because quite honestly, I'm frustrated, too. And when, when we say, I believe that I started off tonight by saying, we all can agree that something needs to happen quickly with 31 and 32. My issue, quite frankly, and I've talked to several aldermen about, my issue, quite frankly, is about 33. And we don't have answers as it relates to 33. So we can't move forward with a resolution that lumps 33 into that resolution, because we don't have answers, answers to those questions. There's a lot out there that we don't know about that, that we have, don't have those answers. So it, I think, I don't think it would be in my best interest as a leader or, or someone who is charged with making a very difficult decision, to rush into something because others think that it's the right thing, the right thing to do. So, you know, hopefully, we can move forward on this together. And, no, I cannot be here tomorrow night. I have, like I said, I have two other things that are actually happening at the, at the exact same time. happening at the, at the exact same time. And I don't think, we didn't even know about, we didn't know about, that, we didn't know that there was gonna be a meeting until, if I'm not, if I'm correct, late last week. So--
Everybody else knew.
Late last week. So, you know, it's, it's difficult to change your schedule on, on a dime. But again, I also ask if the information that's gonna be distributed tomorrow night, if we could get that. And again, I go back to what I said about getting information in a timely manner. If that information is ready for tomorrow night, I'm sure it was ready, we could have had it tonight. So, you know, your, your, your anger and your frustration has to be evenly distributed. It can't just be here, because we have to have information in order to make decisions.
Sure, except for, besides the question about ACE, I believe every other question has been discussed already in council and has pretty much been answered.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I think that oftentimes when, when you hear an answer, it may be, you may look at it as a full answer to a question, and on the other hand, of someone who has more information than you, and I may look at it as half an answer. So, a lot of things that we've gotten, I look at as half an answer, because I know the other questions that I have asked and other information that I have requested that you may not know. So, you know, it's, we have to all be cognizant of, of that, and like I said, I know you're frustrated, I know why you're frustrated, but that frustration has to be evenly distributed, and, and that's the last thing I'm gonna say.
I appreciate that, Alderwoman. Can I change the subject for one minute? If no one else wants to say anything to me or ask a question. Some folks in the city of Springfield generously made donations to a fundraiser I was doing regarding an anti-racism training, and I believe that this is being broadcast. For some reason, Facebook today refunded all of those donations. It's about 3,600 bucks. So I have a report into Facebook to try to, to try to switch it around. That training is on March 20th. It's open to anyone--
That's fantastic.
--in the tri, in the city. I'm on the hook for four grand. So hopefully, yeah, that's fun, right? Hopefully, we'll get this figured out, because a lot of people made very generous donations following some very racist things that happened in the city of Springfield this fall, to make sure that there could be some public education throughout the city. We did a training in December that we had about 50 folks out and was very well-attended. Thank you.
And I was actually one of those that just got a pop-up saying that it had been refunded, and--
Me too.
I was actually gonna ask you about it at the end of the meeting. You know, I'm glad you brought that up though, because, and I probably wasn't gonna say anything about this. However, I think that there are a couple of organizations in the city of Springfield that pride themselves on working towards dismantling racism and working on bringing all of us together. And I think that oftentimes, we look outside of our sphere of friends and organizations in which we, we belong. So I would, I would ask that everyone who's working within one of those organizations, take a really good look at their, or, the organization within which they are working and the organizations within which they belong. Because I think that while they're working on the outside, there's some real, real hard work that needs to be done on the inside as well.
And that's one of the components, actually, of the Crossroads Training. So it's one of the pieces that they do is have you do an analysis of your own organization. And one of the cool things of the training is that Kelly Hurst is a local anti-racism trainer. She travels the country, leading anti-racism trainings for different organizations and schools. One of the best trainers I think I've ever met have been to many of these different types of trainings, because Sierra Club has a commitment to this. Sunshine with Black Lives Matter is the co-kind of planner with me, and so we have many different groups in the room and kind of doing this, this analysis is how, how is our own organization when it comes to, I can't remember the list of how many different things there are. How are we doing on all of these things internally?
Yeah, I think that, I think that there's some real, real hard work that needs to be done in that, with regard to some situations that occurred this weekend--
Mm-hmm.
--in the city of Springfield.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Andy, go ahead. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, Andy Knott, K N O T T. I'm with the Sierra Club. I'm based out of St. Louis. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the council. I was gonna save most of this for tomorrow, and I still will tomorrow, but since some of you won't be here, I thought I might just say a few words. I wanted to focus a little bit on Moody's, who was mentioned earlier. I know that Doug Brown gave a presentation last week on this, but I think this is important enough that it bears some repeating, and it's also sort of some recent news about, about Moody's and the bond rating for, for CWP. And this is, it's gonna read from the December 17th Bond Rating Outlook that affirmed the A3 rating for the utility. Moody's said, "The recent recommendation to retire the older uneconomic, dolman coal-fired units will save significant annual and one-time capital costs that could further improve the utility's long-term financial and credit profile. CWP's elevated exposure to carbon transition risks pressures it, pressures its credit profile owing to a coal-dominated generation profile from a single power plant and three gas oil-fired peaker plants." Of course, they don't talk about the four units at the one power plant. "CWP's generation profile continues to be relatively uneconomic compared to the market as the trend of more market purchases versus self-generation continues, and a recent 20-year Integrated Resources Plan suggests retiring the older coal units." It goes on to say, "Factors that could lead to a further bond upgrade in the future include the utility successfully manages the changes to its power supply mix in the next couple of years while reducing exposure to carbon trans, transition risks associated with its coal dominant, its dominant coal-fired fleet." Also last week, I just want to point out that Moody's, this, this is a report that Moody's released last week. It's aimed at investor-owned utilities, so not municipal utilities like CWP, but it, it's a new report that looks at the climate change risks and hazards to investor-owned utilities, including higher temperatures that affect the efficiency of the power grid. And just next door, where I'm from, Ameren was the top, top utility in that report. I would imagine that if this report looked at municipal utilities, that we would have seen CWP near the top as well, because we're not that far geographically from Ameren service territory. I just want to point this out, because I can remember, you know, three or four years ago, there was a lot of debate here about a rate increase and about how Moody's was looking sort of poorly at the bond rating and urging the rate increase, and there was a lot of debate about that. I remember we submitted comments to Moody's about it, and Doug and I was, Doug was a little upset that I did that. My point is that Moody's does matter. They really do matter, and they are, in this report from last December, they are saying essentially that you all would, are looking good because you have this IRP and you're planning on implementing it. And Moody's is gonna continue looking at things like this, just as they're looking at Ameren right now in this other report. This is not gonna go away. They're gonna continue to look at issues like this and whether or not utilities like CWP are managing their, their environmental risks appropriately. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I'll have more to say tomorrow night. Thank you.
Anyone else to address the council?
I'm Matt Lotterback. I'm an employee of CWP. I work on all three units that are in question here. I have some notes that I've been working over that are kind of rhetorical questions for you guys to think about. Has, has anybody looked at what the water rate increase is gonna be when you remove units 31, 32, and 33? These three units use on an average of 1.2 million gallons of city water a day for operation. When the loss of the income for the water side versus that, because you're gonna have, you're not getting the income from the water, but they still have their electric bill, so that means that money comes out of that fund versus basically a pencil swipe back and forth. The second, the coal cost increase to run unit four. 2017, 31, 32 had bought 275,000 tons, or used. 33 used 407,000 tons. Unit four used 591. 18, it was 305 for 31, 32, 422 for 33, and 562,000 for four. And in 19, it was 159,000 for 31, 32, 356,000 for 33, 500,000 for unit four. Unit four uses less than 50% of the coal purchased, which is gonna affect your purchasing power. The estimated purchasing power price that we've been discussed at, with at, at CWP as the employees in the last couple of months, there's been a change in that number that they've told us. I don't know the exact numbers, don't have that. The other question was the timetable has changed a couple of years on it that we were, that's in question. Without the, the power plant, you know, the power you're producing, you know, in the last 20 years, the power usage has increased across the board. We didn't have electric cars, and didn't have, you had one TV if you were lucky 20, 30 years ago. Now, if you don't have four or five TVs. I know everybody talks about being green energy. I'm not against it, but solar panels are only about 20% efficient. The batteries that you use to store that is a hazardous waste with an estimated life of 20 years. Solar panels are built with hazardous waste. What happens when they go, when they're out of service? Where are you gonna put those? The wind turbines that they're having to decommission, they're taking down, they can't recycle them, they're burying them. Trying to figure out where to bury those right now. I know that the United States is going after heavily, and there's, there's only a few other countries that do this. I'm not against, you know, the handful of countries can't save the world. China's building new plants annually, constantly building new coal plants that have no emissions at all. Period. They're just complete, right out of the stack. If we need, you know, we're just one community. They need to go after the entire world to get this. There's not, everybody doing, you know, the United States can't do our part and save the entire planet. We have to go after the whole thing. And then has there been any discussion with other municipal, municipalities that own their power plants that have had this same issue where they're closing down and what the impact is on them? My daughter lives in Texas. Her husband's in the Army. They have rolling brownouts. She's lost, over the last three years, she's lost in excess of about $4,000 in food because of that. That, and they, and they've done that. They've closed stuff down. So, I just, these are questions that I, that you need to be thinking about and asking. Thank you very much.
Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
Thanks, Mr. Lotterback. Um, you know--
Is tomorrow, excuse me, sorry. Is tomorrow night open, open forum also? You gonna have open forum?
Yeah. Mayor, that's, that's your--
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you. One question I have, and I meant to ask it earlier, is, okay, we negotiated a new coal contract. Did they, did they know at the time, the timetable for closing 31, 32, and 33, or were they given that, they, were they given the idea that they, it was gonna go to 20, 24, whatever the five years is? Because my concern is this. If they cannot, if, 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 if you're losing three-quarters of the ton, of the coal that we're, we're selling, that we're buying from them, is this sustainable for them? And if it isn't, then we got other problems. It was, I just thought about it when Mr. Lotterback was, was talking. If, if we negotiated with them with the idea that we were, you know, we were gonna buy all, all this coal with, within five, you know, for the five years or four years, whatever it is, and now, right after we sign the contract, we pull the rug out from underneath them, I, I, I don't know. I think that's, that's not a good thing, and I, but I, I really, I just want to make sure that there, that there's, they can sustain the, the, the loss of, of our buying the coal.
Yeah, I think Doug or John can address that, the negotiation of that and what was taken into consideration.
Yeah, as far as the coal contract, it's always been that we can basically close a unit at any time, either the old contract and the new contract. But as far as any dates that were shared with them, it's the same thing that's been shared with, with the Aldermen for the last few presentations, as far as the date ranges of when 33 could go, when 31, 32 would most likely go. Although that there is no commitment to anything, but at least sharing that's one of the possibilities of when those units could go away.
So they were, as long as they were, you know, they know, and they, you know, that's--
They attended our meetings, Ralph, when we had the IRP presentation. The coal manager was right in the back--
Joe, I'm just asking if it was, if the, if they knew when these were gonna go, if they knew, as long as they knew when they were doing the negotiations on the coal contract, they can sit through all the meetings they want, but that doesn't mean that they know the actual dates that, that we've been supplied for that. And these dates were not the dates that were on the IRP.
Yeah, they're actually later.
Just, just very briefly, the contract is the same as it's always been, which is a requirements contract. We will buy from them the coal that we need. They are incredibly attuned to the IRP. They know it better than we do, fully aware of it. They did their calculations, I believe, based on us fully implementing the IRP. They also, I would say, plan on likely picking up other coal contracts because of the difficulties of the competing coal companies that they're, I think they're already positioning themselves to try to step in and take care of some of those. But Springfield's contract historically has always been, we don't guarantee to buy X amount, we only buy the amounts we need. So, that means that it could be as little as whatever we want to, up to a maximum, I think it's a million two, I think 1.2 million?
Yeah.
So, it's the same format it's always been, and it's my belief that they are fully attuned to the IRP. They actually gave considerable comments back to the utility in the comment period.
Then that's good. I--
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Alderwoman Conley, did you have something you want to say?
No, uh, well, just, I just wanted to thank you, Doug, for coming up. I, I, that actually was one of my questions at the time of the, the contract negotiation, was the impact of reduction in coal. So, it's the same answer, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, I think roughly, you know, 60% of their business. So, you know, and just looking at, you know, how much the units are running, and 31, 32 are running less and less, the, you know, taking basically, you know, half their business away from, at least part portion, you know, it is definitely significant for them. But I, I also suspect that unit four would run more, you know, if we're not, you know, requiring, because when you, when you put on a unit, you know, you're running lower at night, you gotta back things down. You can only back them down so far because there's, all the environmental equipment's really changed the game over through the years on how you can operate those units at minimum loads. We used to be able to drop them really low, where now we have to kind of stay at a, at a higher rate, so then you gotta back down the other ones. So unit four might pick up more load, you know, moving forward as well than what it's doing right now, as far as the coal burn. But it also depends on the market.
In our, what is our native load?
Uh, well, it varies. I'm trying to think of what the number was for--
Is it 195?
That sounds like a number, but I was thinking it goes higher than that. That's like an average.
And we can generate up to 250, is that correct?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't think this is for you, Doug.
Good evening. My name is Isaac Anderson. I'm a small business owner here in town. Most importantly, the thing I'd like to say, as an Icon Life member, as a Realtor, I can't stress the importance of the Housing Policy Council. I, I think that that, it's huge. I'm very happy to see, you know, discussions on that right now. In response to some things said earlier, I was an Environmental Sustainability major at UIC, and, and there are effective ways to dispose of, of solar panels. And, and just also in response to that, as a, as a US Marine, I think that there are, you know, we as world leaders do need to set the example and trends for other countries to follow. However, you know, I, I think focusing on-- However, you know, I, I think focusing on, on housing is, is one of the most important things we can do. And I wanted to take a moment to, to tell every one of you, I really appreciate the opportunity we have to bring in, this is my sister, Caitlin Turner, the young woman today, so that she can see the examples set by our community's leaders and concerned citizens, both. I think that example is invaluable. If you want to say something, Caitlin, you want to address the council?
I...
Pull it down.
Pull it down.
There you go.
I want to thank you for having, having us here and making this night happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have an executive session?
No, ma'am.
Second.
We are adjourned. You're done with me for 10 months. I don't appreciate that, Alderman Red Path.
I didn't either, but I was... That's ridiculous. I gotta go real quick. I've got to, I've got to stitch one out here.